Okay, we'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. We'll start with the agenda item number three, consent approval with county administrator Renetta McClure. Good morning, Renetta.
Good morning. We have 34 exonerations for 10,396.54 minutes for April 7th, 2021. Vouchers, General County Fund, 243,366.03. Coal severance, 25,000. Magistrate Court, 6315. 911, 10,000, 90364. Camp Muffley, 1,00570.66. Mason Dixon Park, 94322. Transportation levy, 194,225.55. Fire levy, 207,155.42. Recreation levy, 214,389.45. Library levy, 47,672.71. Reallocated coal, 108.57. Assessors' valuation, 632.83. Payroll, 1,670,691.51. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, 19,177.40. 911, 8,932.35. Mason Dixon Park, 302.09. Assessors' valuation, 2,783.69. For a voucher total of 2,647,918.27. We have a budget revision that requires state approval for general fund for other buildings. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, listed on the county website. Fiduciary orders for April 14th, 2021. And you have a first quarter status report for fiduciary commissioner George Armstead.
Move to approve.
A second? Okay, and just the budget item, just for the record, is to create a new account under 425. It's 458. And moving 35,000 from contingency to that account. And that's to cover Camp Muffley coal expenses. So I just wanted to make that for the record. So any other discussion? Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We don't have any separate fiduciary issue.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is introduction of new employees, personnel changes. We have Sheriff Perry Palmer. Perry here?
It's just a transfer, Commissioner. This gentleman is transferring from the processing transport as a process transport officer to deputy sheriff, Ross Watkins. Salary is 3,659 a month. And his start date is 4/16/21.
Have a motion to approve.
Move for approval.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next, Amy Hetrick, superintendent Chestnut Ridge Park.
She's hiring two part-time seasonal employees without benefits. Francisco Penna-Ariet will start on April 18th at 10:15 an hour. And Mark Mullins, his start date is April 22nd, also 10:15 an hour.
Are these rehires?
The first one is, second one is not.
Sounds familiar.
Move for approval. Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any other employees?
Not that I know of.
Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We'll now open the comments from the public session. Anybody from the public that would like to address the commission can come forward. And I don't see anybody, so we will close comments from the public. Next item on the agenda is proclamation of 2021 telecommuners week. Jimmy Smith and Brad, do you want to come forward and tell us about your proclamation?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to introduce our assistant 911 director and also our most senior member at the 911 center with about 25 years at our center. And ask him if he would please read the proclamation.
Thank you, good morning. Proclamation, whereas emergencies can occur anytime that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Montague County Centralized Communications Agency, E-911 Center. And whereas the public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, ensuring safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of MECA-E-911 have contributed substantially to apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved, the Montague County Commission hereby declares the week of April 11th through 17th, 2021 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Montague County and honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Signed, 14th day of April, 2021.
Okay, we don't have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, well, thank you very much. You guys want a picture? Do you like a picture with the proclamation? Or we take it after if you're going to stick around?
We'll do that.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is a presentation from Main Street Morgantown. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, and thank you for having me. I believe all of you know me except for Mr. Arnett. And I'm the executive director of Main Street Morgantown. My name is Barbara Watkins. And I was just here to, you know, part of my reason why I'm here is, first of all, I would like to thank the county commissions for all the support that they give to Main Street Morgantown and the downtown community, which you are a part of. And I also want to thank the, you know, every year we get a holiday tree. The last couple of years, the county workers have been installing, putting it up. If you weren't down here for the process, it's amazing work they do. They do a wonderful job, and it's so appreciative by our organization. And you can always check back on our Facebook page too, because we documented it. So there was just a couple of things. I just want to thank you for all that you do for us, for all the work that you did putting and installing that tree last year and hopefully in the years to move forward. And then I just want to report on some of the projects that Main Street Morgantown is working to enhance the downtown and make it a better place for the community and visitors to not only live down here, work down here, but come and visit. And, you know, one of the things, well, our arts walk, if you weren't down here this past Saturday for our arts walk, we will be having those monthly. And as you saw, we have music on the courthouse square, and we have artists set up on the courthouse square, but also all throughout the downtown. And we'll be having those the second Saturday of every month. So hopefully everybody will get to come out and enjoy and see what we do there. But some of the other things that we're working on, because we're so visceral when it comes to our events, and everybody doesn't realize that we do other things besides just events. So some of the things we're working on, one of them is murals. If you haven't driven past Pleasant Street, on that parking garage there, we're putting a mural in. Because Pleasant Street is kind of a gateway to the downtown. So we're beautifying that area right there. Plus, we're adding a couple additional murals. One, we're hoping that will be on Walnut Street. There on Dominic Claudio's building, where Coolridge is at now. And the other one on the Corwin Building, which is by the new city offices. So, and you see that they're putting in a pocket park there, too. So that is wonderful news there. And so hopefully those other two murals will start. And we have actually filed out a grant to add three additional mirrors to the downtown to make it, you know, to enhance the tourism experience, which helps everybody, which, you know, helps our tax base in the district. But also some of the other things, you know, we all know, we have a lot of empty storefronts right now, unfortunately. So we're going to be working on, you know, and when you drive down, you know, it's not so much that they're an eyesore, but you notice that. You notice they're empty. So one of the things we're working on is to put clings in those storefronts, in the windows in those storefronts. So as you drive down, it shows you, here's an opportunity. It may look like a diner, you know, if it was a restaurant, you may have a diner scene in it. Or if it was retail, some kind of shopping scene in it. So just to enhance it, to give people ideas, or a bookstore scene, or a coffee shops, just ideas of what this building can be, or what this little space can be, to move in. And we're also working with property owners to get those spaces move-in ready. Because we all know that small entrepreneurs can't always afford to pay to enhance a building. So we'll be trying to work with property owners to get them to make their spaces, you know, move-in ready, so that if I wanted to open a business downtown, I could. And with that, we're also working on how to open a business downtown. From the state level and all of the licenses you will need to the state level, all the licenses or anything that you may need to the county level, and for the city. Everything that you may need, you know, from, you know, occupancy and the signage that you may need. So everything that you may need to know, to the inventory tax, you know, we have that. And a lot of people do not know that when they open a business. So to give them everything that they need to open a business, so they don't have to, you know, they may still have to go to an apartment, but they'll know which department they have to go to and where they need to go. And of course, we'll be also working with the FBA on that. So that is also what we're working on. And again, we're working with beautification. You know, we have, you know, we have all these light poles in our district, which gets us a lot of light, you know. We've changed them out so they shine down onto the street. But we also, and if you've been to cities and everything, you see that their trees are wrapped in lights. Well, that hasn't been something we've been able to get past here. So we've moved on to our light poles. We have 60 of them. And then, of course, you know, we're hoping to have streetscape started on Pleasant Street and maybe eventually Walnut Street, too, so we'll have more light. So we're looking to have decorative lights on the poles. So as you're driving down at night, and we have, you know, just like today, you know, it's kind of like a gray day. And so, but there would be lights to brighten it up. So of course, we'll continue to work with the city on the beautification of the flowering plants that we have that will still be on those light poles. There's on growing away, and the snowflakes will still be on them in the winter time. They're not going away. They'll just be wrapped with those, the LED lights to save on electricity. So those are a few other things we're going to. Another one is, we're working with the DOH to have wraps on the electrical boxes. You know, we have those big black boxes, some of them have been tagged in our district. You know, so we thought that it would be nice that if we could wrap them with wraps. You know, we wrapped the two that are in this, that belong to the city of Morgantown, one on Fayette Street and the other on Pleasant Street. So we've been working with the DOH, and they have approved it. So we're just waiting for the signed contract, the city has signed the contract, because it has to go through the city municipality to do artwork on any DOH property. And so we're waiting for the agreement to come back, and we're all ready to start wrapping those as soon as it does. So that's another thing. And I think I mentioned the murals and the three murals in the art walk. And of course, the beautification of downtown. We're also hoping, and we'd like to see more of the tree areas where they have the dirt and the mulch and stuff like that, beautify that just a little bit more and stuff like that. So when you're walking down, you see a little bit more beautification, along with, you know, cleaner streets, your power washing, you know. Working with businesses, you know, the buildings are so easy to power wash because they're historic. And as you know, you can't just take an annual power wash to a building that may damage the mortar and blow it out, or the sandstone buildings. So, but we will be trying to work with the property owners with our facade grant to get some of the buildings power washed. Oh, I guess you're not allowed to ask questions, so that was my question. Okay.
I'll move to suspend the rules. So we can ask questions.
Okay, we have first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Did you have any specific question? I did have, the one question I'm asked a lot is, what's going to happen this year in regards to fireworks? Do you guys know anything? Or is there any efforts in regards to the, is Main Street involved with that? Is the city doing anything? Or?
The committee that, the Celebration of America Committee that works on that, they have not met yet. And I have not heard, and they've not discussed it. You know, I do know that I would like to see, well, I've discussed it with a few people, but not publicly. I would like to see it coming, you know, we have this beautiful now amphitheater that's been rehabbed. And so, yes, I would like to see the fireworks come back and have something in the waterfront for the Fourth of July. Now, because of COVID, and you know, I read all these variants are coming out. I don't know that, you know, because that event brought in about 5,000 to 10,000 people in the waterfront. So I'm really not sure that that will, maybe a parade, maybe we can still have a parade and music on the courthouse square and not have the fireworks. Unfortunately, I was just watching the news again about a new variant in Brazil. So it didn't, so, I mean, I'm not sure we'll ever bring back, or this year we'll bring back such a large event. I know that we won't be having kids' day because of that in the downtown. Nor West Virginia birthday party, because it brings in so many people. And it's hard to social distance. And, you know, we require masks for our arts walk. And I was happy to say, most people did wear masks. But it's kind of hard to enforce it, especially when you have a large event. So, I mean, we go around and tell you, you have to leave, you have to leave. Well, we all know that becomes dangerous for some people, for even law enforcement when trying to make people to wear masks.
Yeah, that brings up a question. Do you know, I know you're not, you're somewhat situated in the city, but we have this beautiful waterfront, an amphitheater, and I go to Fairmont, Charleston. They're having events weekly, even now. Is there a reason why there are no events going on? I mean, it just seems strange that, you know, we have this $4.1 million building, and there's been no events going on. The only event that I know of was the police chief being, you know, sworn in.
Well, I do know they have a, you know, we know that Vincent Kitch, who's the director of their, of the arts department there that they have now for the city. And that is a very good question, and I will, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that's the number one question I'm asked, to say, when are we going to be able? And I'm talking about small events, just to get it used all the time. Because the other cities are now doing that. I'm just wondering, when will we be doing that on a regular basis? Maybe that's the better question I should ask.
On a regular, yes. And you're right, I know that's something that, as our organization, you know, most of our events are downtown.
And that would help the downtown, the Main Street.
But, yes, it would. And so, yes, I will, yeah, I will ask Vincent that, when we starting to have, you know, events versus, you know, because I know they have, you know, private, they have a few private things scheduled, and so, yeah.
That would be great, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
All right, Jeff, do you have anything?
No.
Thank you very much, Barbara. I really appreciate all the work that you're doing. And it sounds like you guys are, even in spite of COVID, you're still managing and still doing a lot and very active. And we appreciate you and your board's activity.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. We appreciate the county and supporting us, and we do hope that continues. And I will be looking forward to maybe coming back on a more regular basis, if that's, okay.
Certainly, certainly.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, I believe there's a miscommunication. The 2021 legislative session review wrap-up with Jennifer Piercy from the County Commission Association of West Virginia, that's next week. So, there's a miscommunication, so we'll table that item and put it on next week. The next item is grants.
I have several things. The first one I have is the Community Development Block Grant application. For MAYSP, we are requesting $18,720. So that'll need to be signed. And then I also have requests for reimbursements. The first one is the SEEP grant for the Day Report Center in the amount of $3,180.04. Then I have the VOCA grant in the amount of $10,592.53. Then I have the Governor's Highway Safety Program, impaired driving, in the amount of $4,203.90. The next one is Safe Communities in the amount of $1,397.25. And the last one is the Click It or Ticket Grant in the amount of $3,658.86.
Move to approve all items.
Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is correspondence. Now, do we have correspondence?
I have a couple of items that came in. Actually, this morning, I got the Bo Park Quarterly Levy Report from Melissa Wiles, their executive director, via email. And then, I'm happy to report that the State Auditor's Office has approved your budget.
Good, perfect.
So we will get all the paperwork in order and send the budgets out to the offices now.
Okay, great, all right, thank you. And we'll need to lay the levy that that budget's predicated on Tuesday. Correct?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, right?
Yes.
All right. Unfinished business? We have none. New business? Consideration of requisition number 52 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount?
Move for approval.
Second? Okay, this is $415,727.31, and it's the normal deposit into the account. This amount is net after the $100,000 statutory lien and tax administration fee is deducted. Okay, we have first and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, consideration and decision on method to sell to pursue for current refunding of the Montague County Building Commission Lease Revenue Bonds Series 2014A for the Montague County Justice Center in order to achieve debt service savings.
Move for approval, discussion.
Second? Okay.
You're moving for the approval of what method of sale?
Public.
Public offering?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct. We wish to move forward with the public offering. We were considering private or public replacing. And the next item will explain that process a little further, but the commission needed to make a decision on whether public or private. So, Mr. Bloom amended his.
Please amend that specifically, public.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on the agenda is to consider approval of a G17 disclosure letter for Cruz and associates to begin work on a possible and specific refinancing of the Series 2014A Justice Center bonds. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Okay, discussion. This is the actual engagement with Cruz to take the steps necessary to prepare that, to pair all the paperwork for the public offering. Is there anything else to add?
You all actually approved this previously, actually in 2019. But we had to put everything on hold due to the lawsuit with the development authority.
Got you.
So we're trying to move forward with this process, refinance the bonds. We're going to achieve a savings of approximately 1.7 million over the life of the term. So Cruz will need to move forward. We also have bond counsel Tom Aiman and Steptoe and Johnson working on documentation along with your Montague County Building Commission. They are meeting this evening to discuss their steps that they have to take. Because in order for the commission to approve any kind of bond issuance, it has to, they have to involve the building commission.
Yes.
So this is the engagement letter to get Cruz started on working with the terms. We'll also be going to Moody's to get a bond rating or a rating for the county. Right now, we're at double A2. Hopefully, it'll stay that way. Of course, that would help with your savings. So that's kind of where we are right now.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Renetta. To consider request by pastors, prayer, fellowship for the use of courthouse square on May 6, 2021?
So moved.
Second?
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I think the title is pretty much self-explanatory. Okay, do we have any other, any other items?
No, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, I do have a question. Are we not going to mention?
The next, the next item on the agenda.
Okay. We have reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors.
Next item, sorry.
Do we have any?
Okay, I didn't realize it was under there.
Ms. Palmer, how are you today?
Good morning, good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to make note and let you all be made aware that we did send out reminder postcards. And this is just reminding people that taxes become delinquent on April 30th. And these are truly intended to be friendly reminders. It says on the back that it's provided to you as a courtesy. It's just something we've started doing in the last couple of years. And we've had a few people that are a little put off by it. However, for every one person that's been a little bent out of shape, we've had 100 people to say thank you. Because a lot of times, you know, things do slip through the cracks, and you just kind of forget. So just a friendly reminder, and just remember that April 30th is the date that taxes become delinquent.
I want to say thank you, because my son got it, and I was able to call him, and he didn't understand the process. So this was the first time he had to pay his.
I see, well, good. And that is the intention, because we don't send out, a lot of people pay their bills, they paid in halves. They pay that first half, you know, by September the first, and then they don't think about it again. And we don't send out another bill.
Yes.
So this was just a little friendly reminder.
I want to say thank you.
No, thank you, because I received one of those. But mine was planned, you know, I'm planning on paying my taxes for my property, my second property in this month. So I got it, and I was one of the ones that, hey, thank you. It reminds me that, you know, I've got to get that taken care of.
I think it's great, yeah. I hate to read it in the paper afterwards.
Exactly.
And you're paying the extra cost.
Right, right, and then you're paying your publication fees and interest, so, yes. There you go. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Delegate Statler?
All right. Welcome.
Joe, I do apologize. I think you were going to participate in the legislative wrap-up and add anything that we needed, but you're certainly welcome to come back next week, too, and participate in that when our County Commission Association leader is here. So, welcome back. I figured you'd be Rip Van Winkle for about a week, trying to sleep off that session. It was supposed to be a mild session, but it ended up being pretty busy.
It was a busy session. And I would say to you that it was interesting in hearing what some of the perspective from the outside view looking in, because, you know, the things had changed. But first, before I forget it, there's a couple of things that I wanted. One, I wanted to speak to Jimmy Smith before the day's over, because I got to get an update on Catherine Nob. And also, I see Ms. Watkins, I believe, has left. I wanted to run an idea past her that, for the commission and everything. But saying that, it was a busy session. Some of the things that I will tell you personally that I missed, I know folks were put off that as many people couldn't be in the building that had been in the past. And let me tell you that that was a hindrance not into the fact that you depend, and you begin to look for that type of knowledge coming in to keep you in tune with some of these issues. Because quite frankly, when you're out there swatting at a hornet's nest, you're trying to keep from getting stung, and they're coming from all directions. And sometimes, somebody coming in and giving you a point of view that you hadn't thought of on some of this legislation, because you can read it time and time again. With the process like it is, you know, committees all the way through, you get quite busy. And sometimes you just miss aspects of it that's coming in. So I always appreciate the back-and-forth information that I get. And I missed that this year, into the fact that, you know, you have the county commissions and the county associations, they come in and give you their perspective on all the views that's in before them. And some of them may slip between the cracks on you, because it may not be in the committee that you're in. And quite frankly, I'm not one of those that says I can read about 4,000 bills in its entirety and comprehend everything that's on it. on it. Especially, in some of the complexity of them. You know, some of them will be 400 pages. And so, it gets quite long to read all that. So, sometimes you depend upon that help coming forward to advance that for you. The one thing that I wanted to bring to you today, I just, actually, was just thinking about it sitting there, and I'm not sure if you knew, but there was one bill that passed late on a Saturday evening. I had to work pretty hard to get that thing up before the midnight bell rang. And, and I can't give you the bill numbers. Don't ask me bill numbers, because quite frankly, after a while, they all run together. And some of them will come out to you, and you'll remember, but the most of them just falls in the line saying, if somebody gives you a bill number, that was the most important bill to them. But it may not have sank into my head as being the most important bill I was looking at. But the PTSD bill, and this is something I'm sure that you guys will get, it's a first responders, is now, it's permissive. We did not pass it unless it was permissive, but it allows for the counties, the cities, the volunteer fire companies, anybody that's a first responder, which 911 would be in that group, is, they can possibly get a policy to help them with PTSD issues. And the only reason I bring this forward to you, I'm not saying whether you should or shouldn't, but I would ask that if you start looking for it, because I can see it coming towards you from the County Sheriff's Department, or possibly from 911, that if you look at this, you might want to look at it as a overall coverage for the county, and maybe include the volunteer fire companies in. Because I will tell you, I can't think that this will be a cheap endeavor. And the reason I say that, and this is why this type of presumption legislation always just scares me to death. And I did take this upon as Chair of Fire and EMS. Normally, I won't take those type of issues on because of the, the way they want to word them and make them that it has to happen. And when you do that, if you know, we just got rid of workman comp and got it down a little bit for the volunteer fire companies, and it always scares me that we will drive that back up. And you want to be careful of that. But what this opportunity may give you, if you would look at a blanket coverage countywide for all your first responders, that maybe you can get it down to where it would be something coming from the county that you could afford. Not saying you do it, you know, like I said, the cities can buy it for their police departments, they can buy it for their paid fire departments and that type of thing. It's permissive. We did put a five-year sunset rule on it. Why it became really apparent that we get that bill through Saturday night, I'm not sure if it's out there. And do not know anything about what happened, but last Saturday, a law enforcement officer, I believe it was in the Wheeling area, had took his own life and left behind a wife and an 18-month-old child. Now, saying that, and I don't want that going out that, that I know it was because of this, I don't. It could have been any reason in the whole world. But, you know, you know some of these issues adds on to it. So, I just want to make that aware to you guys, that maybe it would be something that you at least want to put in your thought process and look at. The TIF bill, I will tell you that I would have much rather had the TIF bill than I had introduced. Not that I, it needs to pass because I introduced it, but it was a more comprehensive TIF. And possibly, some of it would not have made it through to the finish line. Some of it had to do with the STIF. And some people were saying, well, they didn't want to do anything with the STIF right now, including the Tax Department. Because remember, when you get this legislation out there, then it does start coming to you, and people are saying, you can't do this, because this is what it will affect. For instance, a lot of bills that will affect you. Mr. Music and I, we were speaking just a few moments ago. You know, there's lots of legislation issued out there to do away with the automobile and personal taxes. We know what that will have an effect on the counties and on the school systems if it goes out there. There's lots of those that comes up and goes on. So there's, for every bill that has something good in it, I will tell you that there's somebody that it may have the effect that you don't want. So, we didn't get that bill moving forward, but the TIF bill did make it through. Don't know if the governor will sign it. There's no indications that he won't. But it basically allows TIF districts that was in place prior to a certain date to take advantage of this, and it would give them a five-year extension. We was hoping for a 10-year extension, but like always, sometimes you have to compromise and get what you, and that bill was running late, I will say. That, that the later the bills gets running, the more chances are they're going to get a lot of compromise, just, just to get them across the finish line, to give you something. The good thing about it is, well, I guess how you look at it. The good thing about it is, we will go back into session in January. So, we have interims. One will be made a tenth. I don't think we'll all be there for that. And then we'll have one in June, September, October, November, and December, and then in January prior to session starting, as always. So, those interims will be out there. So if there's anything that you guys want to propose or to look at, I will tell you, and to anybody out there that would be listening, is now's the time to hit your delegates and senators up. If there's anything, any change that you would like to propose, now's the time to do it, because we have all summer long. One of the biggest problems was, or maybe it was a good thing, is bill drafting. Because they couldn't all come, and the proofreaders all couldn't be at the building, we ended up with tons of bills that was really delayed getting them up. I know a couple of my bills that I was genuinely interested in getting passed, they were in bill drafting for a good while. And not saying anything, but it's just, it was just the atmosphere that was down there this year. So, again, I would offer to you, anything that you want to change, get to me early enough that we can look at that, or any of the rest of them that's elected from the area. It doesn't have to be me. It's anybody can take it forward. And I would say to Jimmy Smith, that not sure where the 911 bill ended up. I kind of lost track there Saturday and some bills that was moving around. So, I can check on that for you. Now, that's another thing. If anybody's got any that they're truly interested in, I can go back and, and can look and see where they're at. So, 281 passed. As of, I believe, day before yesterday, I looked, there were about 80-some that the governor had signed, and the rest of them are still out there waiting to have signatures on them. Or, he can just let them go into law by no action, doing nothing, and they become law after a certain point in time. So, with that, I thank you for allowing me to speak. And if you got any questions, or any time you.
I'm, I'm good right now. I'll talk in my, my remarks. So, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one item. The commission asked me to work on two job descriptions. One is a venue manager for the Extension Services and Foreage Center at Mylan Park. And the other is a director of parks, or that name may change, but it's, it's more or less a supervisor over the parks, superintendents. I've got those ready, if you all want to have a discussion about those.
Yeah. So, these drafts are ready to go. They didn't make the agenda on time, so they'll be on the agenda next week. But just so people understand, the, the superintendent, the supervisor of superintendents will be a position that will manage our superintendents on behalf of the commission. Right now, the, all three superintendents do have a direct line to the commission, but we can't always be as timely in regards to everyday manufacturing and making, or any everyday management, manufacturing. Where'd I get that from? So, this also will help try to ensure some consistency across all three parks, that the superintendents have this individual to, again, ensure consistency, that we're all doing things best practices, we're all doing things in the same manner. So, it will just, just a layer of, as our parks are becoming more busy, especially with COVID, we really have decided that we needed this. And then that person would be a direct report to our county administrator, and also, each commissioner would still have a park that they can correspond with, and the superintendents and the supervisor can bounce things off of. But we just felt we had the need to add this layer to make us operate a little more efficiently going forward. The other position's a venue manager for our, for our building out at Mylan Park. Right now, Mylan Park manages that, that facility for us. But Mylan Park is primarily a athletic complex. They do, they do have a lot of different things that they do in, in the park. But what we wanted, and when we built this building, we had a lot of input from individuals that wanted to make it a agrotourism destination. And this individual will carry out the commission's desires to make more of those events happen, and will be more directly in communication with a lot of those organizations that want to utilize the facility for those manners. And it ultimately will, will probably end up in a cost savings to the commission to have a direct report managing the building, rather than, rather than Mylan Park managing it directly. So, again, that's, we met with Mylan Park last week to talk about this, and it's really, we all mutually agreed that this would be a better asset to the, to the park, to the community in, in going in this direction. And then that individual can also handle a lot of things that, specifically right now in regard to building, I think I'm handling a lot of the inquiries and stuff. So, that will take a lot off of our plate, and then that individual will also report directly to the county administrator. Did I miss anything? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'll bring in under my report, so.
Okay. Well, this will be on, so you, you want to make a motion to put it on next week's agenda?
Yeah. I said move to have these two positions placed on the agenda.
Okay. Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Is there anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. So, we, any other reports from elected officials, department supervisors? Okay, next is a report from county commissioners. Tom?
Yeah, I have a bunch. First, I know I speak for behalf of the county commissioners. Ben Conley's not here. His father has, is being operated right now in the hospital, so that's why he's not here. So, I thought some prayers are with him. So, I did want to say that. Second, I want to make the public aware that we have an enormous amount of vaccines available. We have plenty of vaccines, and you do not have to just be in Montague County. You could be from the state, or we have learned that Fayette County and Green County have had over 500 individuals who have come in to get the vaccines, because they have worked, they have gone through either WVU Hospital, Mon Health. So, I'm just putting it out there. Yes, we have plenty of vaccines, of Pfizer, and, thank you, Moderna. And we really want to help, you know, get the vaccines out and get more of the public involved. So, I did want to make that aware. Last Thursday, as you are aware, we were very honored, the three county commissioners hosted Senator Manchin and State Auditor JB McCuskey on the American Rescue Plan. It did get national attention. We did have numerous reports from CNN, even on High Street at 8:45, they did a report. And we're very pleased. They were very, it was a very positive report about what's going on in Montague County, and also, an explanation of, about, more about the American Rescue Plan. And I really do like that we're sending a message that, quote, "Democrats and Republicans are working together to oversee and monitor this in West Virginia, and I hope it's a model for other areas." Saturday, I attended the Jeff GOC Memorial. It was an exceptional program. It was packed. And in it, you'll see they were very appreciative, Montague County Commission, giving, as you mentioned, the venue, and that's what I wanted to talk about just quickly. I did not realize what we're going to be able to do with that building, till I saw both sides being used. And it was amazing. In fact, while I was there, I had several individuals come up asking how they could rent out the facility. So, I really believe this is a real need. I think Mylan Park was in agreement that it would be better to work with one person who's overseeing the program, and I really look forward to that venue. Let's see. I was fortunate, I just want to say that I did go in after, since September 2019, I've not seen my daughter, and that was when she got married. And I'm excited to say that I went into Philadelphia for 24 hours and made it back. And one of the things I did notice, and I took some pictures that I'm going to send to the city, is how they are doing restaurants now, and the facility of, rather than just like we have that little butt out in the parking, they just had like, kind of like what children's school bus shelters, but they just made a long one, and had it, so it was open with heaters. And it's just another concept that they did. And they basically said to the parking authorities there, that look, no one's coming downtown now, so maybe they could use the funds from the CARES Act and stimulus to help offset the parking, so then the businesses could then have these build-outs, or whatever they're called. But it was just something that was really neat, and I'm just really glad that I made it to and from safety, from Philadelphia. And they're unfortunately also having, what we are starting to see, they're having a spike of young people getting the COVID again. So, again, I ask in a strong, and I know all three of us are saying, I know you're getting vaccines, but still, please follow the rules, wear the mask, the six feet, because we're slowly getting to see the light at the end of the tunnel, but let's not give up. So, that's.
Jeff, a couple of things. Back to Senator Manchin's visit, I just want to thank Commissioner Bloom for all his work in, in setting that up and putting it on. He was running around well, like Tom runs around, but with a, with a purpose of getting the thing put on, and it went off without a hitch, and it was, it was pretty impressive for, for, I wouldn't say a one-man show, but you were certainly the lead on that. A little update on the Camp Muffley Pool. Work is progressing still. The bathhouses are down. We've tentatively approved the building plan for the new shower house and concession area, and, and a new, a new pump for the pool. So, it's, it's going along there pretty well. We've also renovating the baseball fields and volleyball, sand volleyball courts out there. So, they're available for rent or for use by county, by county residents. Just call out there, and they can get you set up. And that's all.
Thanks, Jeff. Since the last meeting, last Thursday, I had my red team meeting and Development Authority meeting. And then in the afternoon, as both commissioners have indicated, we had our meeting with Senator Manchin and JB. And thanks, Tom, again, for all the legwork you did in, in setting that up and make it, making it a reality. On Friday, I met with Don Robinson. He's the president of MVB Bank, and we talked about, Don generally handles the baseball tournament we have every year, though they're not, it just couldn't work out with WVU's schedule and the school schedule this year. He's, he's looking into a possibility of a few things over the summer. So, he'll let us know, and we'll move forward. We had staff reports, and then on Friday, I did get my second COVID shot. So, I know a lot of people say they have reactions on the second shot. I was fine, just sore arm. So, just like the other commissioners have said, please, you know, schedule your appointment and go get your shot. We have, we have plenty of availability for shots now. And the only way we're going to get out of this is we vaccinate everybody and continue being diligent with masking and sanitizing our hands and keeping acceptable distances. So, this week, Monday, was the, the governor and Brad Smith announced the West Virginia ASCEND program, which Mon County ought to be proud. Morgantown was chosen as one of the three locations. So, we'll be working closely in Mon County to make that program a success. I'm pretty excited about it. In the afternoon, we had our Airport Commerce Park financing discussion. Yesterday, I had a Juma meeting, which is the Joint Use Management Agreement that manages the Aquatic and Track Center. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow, I have Mylan Park Board Today's a regular day. Tomorrow, I have Mylan Park Board of Directors meeting and then Friday, we have staff reports. Joe, thank you for, for all your work this session. It's not always the bills you put forward. It's sometimes just the effort for other bills. I know, for instance, a perfect example is the bill you put forward that you were working on, you were working with the two educational entities in Marion County to work together. And though you didn't pass a bill to do that, you brokered a deal that you're, you're putting a bill up is what brokered the deal to make those two institutions that have been at odds for 20 years come together and to an agreement that both of them are, are thrilled with. So you don't get a lot of the credit for the things that don't work out the way the legislative process would, would, would indicate, but your, your efforts in that are certainly noted by a lot of people. So thank you for all that and thanks for all your other work on behalf of the commission. It really is nice having a, you know, when something's going on and you're not sure, you, you reach out to us. We can get to our people. We can get to our association and it's a real good communication chain. So thank you for all your efforts. I wanted to thank Barbara for all of her efforts with Main Street, but she had left already, but really appreciate her coming in. And Jimmy, you and your guys, thanks for everything you guys do. It's just not a hollow jester passing this Telecommunication Week proclamation. You guys did yeoman's work through, through this pandemic, just as you always do and you're the front line, so thank you for, and thank all your employees for everything you guys do. And that's probably, oh, I do want to say, well, on a personal basis, I want to wish my brother well. He's in the hospital in Pittsburgh and my other brother watches these meetings, so hello, Scott. That's all I have. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.